You look pretty good.
Pretty good, yeah. Okay, everybody ready? All righty, let's call it a border here. Good evening, as we call the meeting of our lower city council to order, I welcome you here today for Tuesday, March the first, two thousand and twenty-two. We welcome you here this evening, and as we normally do, when we get started in a few minutes, we'll have our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Before we go to that time, let's go ahead and do our roll call that we have here, and we'll make sure who's with us. So we'll start with the members here on the podium, and I'll start with Mr. Presswood on my right, if you will go around.
Yes, Ralph Presswood here.
Todd Perdue.
Chrissy Thomas.
David Stevens.
Hey, Perkins.
Jonathan Beal.
Scott Holbrun.
TJ Rohr.
Thank you. Shirley Cannon, our city clerk, is here. All right, let's go down the list. Joshua Harris, our communications director, is here. Donna Bean.
Chief's back here.
Here.
Thank you. Fire chief Ken Hare.
I'm here.
Thank you. Economic development, Main Street, K O N Horn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Police chief Brent Phelps is with us this evening. Thank you, chief. Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Story.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas.
Here.
Thank you. Our Planning Director Jenny Wheelock.
I'm here.
Thank you. And our Public Works Director Jared Wright.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Well, thank you, sir. And by the way, we might as well, since tonight is your final council meeting with us, we would like to offer a very special thank you to Jared for his service with the city of Lenore. I know this is your final week with us as you go off on a new venture, and we wish you all the success in the world. Jared, thank you for all you've done for our city through not only Public Works, but just your, the way you conduct yourself, the way you've always been. We appreciate that very much. So thank you very much for what you've meant for the city. We will miss you. We hope that we will, I know we will see you around other things, but we really enjoyed working with you as our Public Works Director. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been an honor.
Well, it's been an honor for us as well, so thank you for that. All right, we will then, let's go to our time now, a moment of silence and our pledge. As we go to that, I would like for you to keep the family of Stephen Stewart. Stephen serves on a couple of our boards here in the city. He lost his mother this past week, so please keep Stephen and Jamie and their family in your thoughts and prayers as we move forward. So at this time, let's please rise for a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I would mention Candace Simmons is also with us tonight. Thank you, Candace, for being here from the Caldwell Free Press. Thank you on that. Before we get started, I would say, and Chief's coming up in just one second, I would like to comment that, of course, as February has finished, I would like to compliment Joshua Harris and Candace and others who did a great job during the month of February with Black History Month. We had some wonderful articles that were done, a lot of good things. Yes, sir.
Also Lester Whittington.
Lester, yes. Thanks, Lester, for all he does for Black History Month as well. A lot of things couldn't be live like we normally do, and we hate that, but hopefully we'll be back with that soon, and we'll look forward to maybe this summer doing some things. We do have some other events planned in June and several things that we may get to celebrate, but we honored a lot of people, a lot of firsts that Joshua did, our first council member, our first female council member, and a lot of other things that were done. So we have great articles that you did. So Joshua.
Yeah, I just reiterate what Mr. Hillbrand said, that the idea came from Lester Whittington at MLK. So, I mean, he had all the records and he had all the info, so he just asked me if I could help put it out there, and I said, that's what I do.
Yep, you did. You did a great job. Thank you, and thanks to Lester, and we'll make sure that we pass that along to him. So great job was done. Hopefully, we can do more. Okay, I'll now bring Chief Phelps up, and we'll talk about our 2021 annual report from our fine police department.
Hello, everybody. The Tuesday at this point in the week is going okay.
Good.
Not been too bad for us. We're one day closer to Friday, but we got through Monday. Going to go through slides, your, the annual report is in your packet. I won't be going through that line for line. If, as you review that, and if you have specific questions about something I don't cover tonight, email me, give me a call, and be more than happy to answer those questions at a later date. As I went through it, me and the leadership team, we looked at certain things where we saw differences, and so I'll explain some of those, go over some of those, trying not to take up too much of your time. Just to jog your memory as a council, back in 2018, the department was switching from the UCR reporting criteria to the NIBR's reporting criteria, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System. We were completely switched over in December of 2018. So 2019 was our first full year under that new national reporting system. So last year in 2020, I didn't compare 19 and 20. One, we had a brand-new year of data from 2019, and then, as I'll mention here in a minute, you know, 2020 numbers were completely different, and so I'll explain some of that. But just to remember, you know, as we talk about some of that, 2019 is kind of now our new baseline under this reporting system. Pretty much just covered all that. One of the things that I did in the PowerPoints was as I looked at the, as I looked at the data, you had 2019, the numbers, and then when we looked at 2020, everything dropped through the floor. Obviously, our country was in shutdown, our communities were in shutdown, and so the majority of everything really dropped off in 2020. And so in trying to compare all three years, it made it real hard because it didn't feel like you were comparing apples to apples with 2019 data, which is kind of the baseline, 2020, and then 2021. So what, what we did, you'll see the information in here, but we tried to compare 2021 and 2019. Those numbers seemed more comparable. There were some, some differences in different categories, and we'll talk about some of those. But when I talk about the decreases or the increases in certain areas, just for comparing numbers, I'm talking about year 2019 and year 2021. I know that's about as confusing as running in mud.
I think about every business has had to do that.
You know, as we looked at it, it was just, I could have had some really great numbers last year. I could have talked about how we reduced crime in 2020, and we had things way lower.
We appreciate you.
And, yeah. And then this year, I would have had to talk about how everything is, has really increased, but actually, when you look at 19 and 21, they're fairly consistent. Moving into that, in our crimes against persons, we actually had nine percent fewer from 2019 to 2021. So there was a slight reduction there in that category. Sadly, we did have an increase in our homicides. In the last couple of years, we'd had zero homicides. Unfortunately, in 2021, we had two very tragic incidents that were domestic-related, that some folks' lives were taken by somebody else. Our crimes against society, there was a 21% reduction, but when you look at that category, there was one line item that there was an increase, and in that line item, it was the weapons law violations. And, and we saw a little bit of a spike in that, and that's discharging a firearm, carrying a concealed weapon, things along those lines, and we saw an increase in that area. In your crimes against property, there was a 13% reduction from 2019 to 2021. However, in the three property, three of the property line items, specifically larceny, there was an increase. The one where it's just a generic larceny, there was a 24% increase. Larceny from motor vehicles, where somebody breaks into a car, steals something out of a car, and then the larcenies where they're stealing something off the car. They're taking batteries, they're taking catalytic converters, they're taking wheels and tires, things like that. There was, there was an increase. In, in looking at some of this data, I talked to several different chiefs that I know, and the majority of everybody experienced increases kind of in the same areas we experienced. The, the chief of Gastonia, he, you know, we were talking about our crimes against person, and, you know, and he said his homicides had doubled. They, they were at 13, and they'd only run six or seven a year. And, and so where we're not happy about some of the increases, it feels like it's consistent to where we are in, in the state and in America. Well, some other things to look at, our calls for service, we did have an increase in our animal complaints. We, we had an increase in our civil disturbances, and that's, that can, can encompass a lot of different things, neighbors being upset, somebody getting close to fighting, but they're not physically fighting, yelling back and forth, things like that. And then our domestics increased as well.
We had so many more people that were at home.
That's, yeah. In 2020, we felt like our domestics were going up, and as we began to look at the data, we could tell they were, and they've kind of stayed, they've dropped a little in '21, but, but not a lot, pretty consistent, and.
But in '20, they were at home, and they stayed there.
All the time, yep. Yeah, we, we had, it felt like we had a lot more calls of things that, you know, one, people being confined, and then things where people called to complain about things that, that were very visual. And I, I remember having a few conversations with a couple individuals, and they said, well, when I was at work all the time, I didn't realize this, but now that I'm home all day, you know, there, there's this issue with traffic, or there's this issue. And so I think some of that plays into, into that. The next two categories, I wish I could tell you I have an answer for, but I don't. Our involuntary commitments almost doubled. We typically will run anywhere from 80 to 100 commitments a year, and in, in '21, we had 184. The only, I, I don't know that I can quantify it or, or give a specific reason. Other places are seeing increases there. We do have some services here in our community that we didn't have before, and, you know, you could make an argument that, you know, people are reaching out to that resource that used to not be present, and, and that may factor into some of it. The next one is, is a, another one of those community problems that law enforcement has a small piece of, but it's, it's very disturbing, and that's in our overdoses. Our overdoses went up 73% in, in there. Our opiate-induced overdoses increased. We used Narcan 55 times last year and saved 54 individuals.
But you know, that may go back to what Mr. Perdue had to say over there with the confinement at home.
I don't have the answer to it. I told another chief that I was talking to, I said, you know, if I, if I knew how to fix this or the answer to it, I could probably retire from the police department, go across the country and teach it, and, and it'd be very lucrative. But it is an issue, and I think there are a lot of different factors that, that factor into that. It's sad. For both of these, when, when a family is at the place to where they're needing to commit a family member, you know, their whole world kind of stops, and they are, they are grasping at straws and reach, they've hit that place to where, you know, they don't have any other options than to try to get this individual help, and, and those are hard. And the, the thing that scares me with the overdoses is, is the level of addiction that, that a lot of these individuals have. You know, when you think about an officer arrives, there's an individual not breathing, heart not pumping, and we use Narcan, they, they come back to life, medical folks get there, check them out, and all they want to do is sign the form so they can go and continue the activity they were doing before we got there. It, it's, it's very disturbing to think their level of addiction is at that place that, that is where they are. And, you know, for law enforcement, there are things we can do, and there's things we're trying to work on to assist, but, you know, if they've almost just died, the threat of, well, you know, we're going to put you in jail doesn't matter. And so, you know, it's got, the answer there is, is more complex than just, you know, it, it is a community problem for sure. Just some other numbers. In our criminal charges, we, in felony misdemeanor, we had 2871. These numbers we get out of the numbers that we report to the ABC Commission. Our total drug charges, our total alcohol violations, our traffic crashes. We had zero fatalities this year, that we're always proud of that. There was a slight bump. One of the things is, you know, when we look at our, our crashes and where those occur, typically, we have the most accidents from about the crossroads to about Excela. And that's year after year in that area. Well, that's, that's our most dense area. We have our most vehicle traffic in that area. We have our most businesses where people are turning in and turning out. And so you will, as I tell people that are traveling through Lenore, I tell them, you know, we do a lot of enforcement on 321 before the crossroads and coming south before that area with Blue Ridge and Excela, because our, our thought is, in looking at the data, if that's where we're having our most crashes, if we can slow people down before they get in that congested area, then we can hopefully eliminate some accidents, or at least keep the accidents from being as severe. And so when you see guys out on 321, you know, it's not that, you know, we just didn't have anything else to do, it's, it's specific. We typically only go into neighborhoods when we get complaints, and that happens, we'll get complaints. A lot of times, what ends up happening is, when we get a speeding complaint in a small neighborhood, we end up writing everybody from the neighborhood. And, you know, folks think, everybody's flying through here and needs to stop, and then, you know, sometimes we end up writing tickets to the people that called, and because they're the folks that travel that neighborhood the most. And, but we try to do increased visibility for a little bit before we, you know, really crack down on the enforcement. Some other numbers in our investigations unit with recovered property, those are in the report. Our communication center, over 38,000 process CAD calls. With some of the changes in our communication center, we don't have the ability to pull our exact nine-on-one numbers anymore due to some of that technology. We're, we're working through that. That still comes through the county's primary piece app and then is routed to us for right now. Our patrol division, we had over 22,000 police service calls. We performed over 9,000 special house checks and then over 759 call follow-ups. Our investigations division, those are criminal cases, search warrants, consent searches. We had 136 nuisance cases. That's a little lower number than, than in years past, where some things we're, we're improving on, and we've reported that. A few of the cases this past year were a little more intense cases, that took a little more time than, than a, a simple grass case, where you go out and you take a picture, you send them a letter, they cut the grass, and you can close it out. But we're, that, as we talked about at the retreat, that's a focus, and, and we're, we're making headway in that area. Our police activity, you'll see this in, in our report. We, we put that out there publicly. That's our enforcement by race. You know, from time to time, I get a few questions. I think it helps that, that, that we make it public and put it on the website and, and put it out there. With 10-plus years ago, law enforcement had to report to the state, they had to do a traffic stop report for every traffic stop, and that data is collected on every traffic stop and sent to the, to the state, and, and have done that since that started. And so some of those numbers come from there. But when you look at those numbers and those categories, they're, they're fairly close to, to our demographics, to our community. With specifically the, the use of force, when you think about use of force, that is, those numbers, there's a couple of things that comprise of that. We had 46 last year. Out of that 46, not all of those are exactly what you would think of as, as force. You know, one of the things we document and have for a long time is anytime we point a weapon at somebody, that's a use of force. So if, you know, Mr. Beal is holding a baseball bat, I pull my weapon out, I, I give him commands, he puts it down, turns around, I holster my weapon, I handcuff him, I still have to document that use of force. So some of those type things are in those numbers as well. When you, you think about that, one, that is us responding to somebody's actions. If, if we are having to use force, they failed to comply with commands or our direction, and we are being responsive or reactive to their actions. The, the other thing to think about is the 26050. That is every citizen contact that we can document on paper. All our incident reports, all our calls for service, all our off-duty, everything that we can put in a number to say we had a contact with a citizen, we know was slightly over 26,000. Now, there's a lot more than that. Think about the high school football games at High Brighton. There are six or eight officers there, there's 2,000 people there, we count that, if, if there's six officers, we count that as six. Now, those six officers may have had, you know, 300, 400 citizen contacts during that event. So we know that number is, is low, but that's the ones we can show on paper, these are the citizen contacts. And so when you think about, out of all of those citizen contacts, there were 46 incidents where we were, we were not able to get people to do what we asked them to do, or told them to do, or instructed them to do, and we had to use some type of force. That number's extremely low. Just some of the other things, I'll go through these quick. We started last year with the company extra-duty solutions. We had a full year of that, that, switching over to that, where they manage that. If there's a local number, if somebody needs an off-duty officer to work at an event, they call that, there's a manager there that works out the details, they have our policy, it's, it's our program, they schedule it, it's all automated. Officers get paid, there's some insurance in the event that, you know, an officer opens a car door and hits a car beside him, there's some insurance to help cover that. It puts all the officer stuff in one place. In talking to the, some of the vendors that use off-duty on a regular basis, one of them, when I was talking to him, he said, so you're telling me all I have to do is write one check, and this company keeps up with all the taxes for all the different officers? I said, yep. And he said, sign me up, yeah. He said, I may be able to reduce some of her hours. And so we've had a pretty good success. You know, people don't like change. You know, there's been a few calls where somebody, you know, says, how do I do that? Oh, that's not the way it used to be, but once we talked through it, it's, it's worked pretty well. It's been interesting. We hosted a meeting about a year and a half ago at PD, and guys from Hickory-Morganton and some other places came to, to, to here, and we kind of got on first, and now those guys have been calling us, hey, how's that going? We're thinking about doing that, too. And so, you know, sometimes it's nice when, when you're the first and they have to call you, because a lot of times, we end up calling them, but it's, it's worked well. Some other stats, hit those quickly, just our ABC permits, our backgrounds, our polygraphs. I was meeting with a reporter today, and she said, polygraphs, what's that? Those are typically our applicants when we're, when we're doing an applicant for hire, that's toward the end of that process. And then just some of our other, our Crime Stoppers numbers, our evidence numbers, and then our collected medications and, and different things. We had, we've talked about this at the retreat, I'll hit it quickly. We had some retirements this past year, a couple of them that we were anticipating, a couple that we weren't. Our C platoon, which is our traffic, and in our schools, we had a lot of movement. Not all of them were new in our schools, but some of them moved schools. Officer at the middle school went to the high school, and so there was a lot of movement in, in the schools there. We've talked about the succession planning, we're, as, as I hear guys that have gray hair like myself at the office, talk about, you know, I have this many months, I have this many months, you know, we're Sergeant Moore, just retired, we're, we're, we're looking in, trying to plan ahead. The part of that that is scary is, we know there's fewer people coming into the profession, and we know there's a group of senior leadership that in the next several years that are going to be leaving. And so, you know, one, focusing on those mid-level supervisors that we have to prepare them, we feel like is really important, and then continuing to, you know, be able to, to work to recruit those new folks, because, you know, we, we need good people as much now as we ever have. Couple other highlights, and I'm done, and I'll take questions. We are hopefully reaching toward the end of our risk assessment with the league. We started that a couple of years ago, it kind of got put on hold with the pandemic. We have submitted all of our policies for them to review, and they're in the process of going into our system and reviewing the policies and making sure that, that our policies fit with the risk assessment. Once that's completed, then the individuals that run that program for the league, they will come and make a presentation typically to council on behalf that the department has met that requirement and is functioning at, at that level. There's also a reduction in our insurance cost. I can't remember the percentage, but, you know, if you complete that risk review and, and keep it up to date, then, then there's a benefit of that as well. Some of the other policies as a part of that, and just in our reviewing of policy are at the bottom. Policy is always changing. You know, we, we had a pretty significant law change in October, December with SB 300, and so we had to go in and create some policy and tweak some policies that we already had existing because of those law changes. Accomplishments, some of our building stuff, our fitness room, we upgraded a few pieces of equipment, replaced the back door, I know I showed pictures of that at the retreat, some flooring, some new backup phone systems in communications. We've, we're almost at the end of the firing range, we've done a lot of improvements up there, much needed. We continue to replace ballistic vests for our patrol officers on a yearly basis. We use some grant funding to help with that. And then, you, excuse me, you may have seen the electronic signs, we have two of those, they collect data force, which is very helpful, and, you know, they will flash the speed limit and I think say, slow down, and there's a few, you can put some different text in there when it hits that, and they're more mobile, and so they're a little easier to move around, and when we get complaints, one, we can capture data and, and put that out. And then that, the last picture was the, the new car design that, that came out after the first of the year. And questions? first of the year. And questions that you guys have currently this evening? Yes, sir?
Are all your officers trained to administer NORCAN? And if not, what are your plans to get them qualified?
That's a good question. We we do for the last probably four to five years. Once we started receiving it, we put policy in place. Chief Brown was the chief then, and we put policy in place on it being administered. For us to give it to an officer, we have to give them training on that and depending on which type of device, because there's a couple of different types of devices. But all of them have training on it and and know how to use it. It's important for a couple of reasons. One, for our community, but also for our officers. If our officers are out and they get exposed to something and were to have a reaction, it's good to have that on hand. We may, we've not had to, knock on wood. But, you know, some places have where they've had to administer that on an officer or fireman or EMS. We have been getting it through the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition that may not be completely right, through some grants and not, we've not had to pay for it. Those days are probably coming to an end. And so we we are probably in the next couple of years going to have to begin to to fund a little bit of that to to purchase some of it. We've been getting some from emergency management here in just the last little bit. But we're probably end up gonna, what I'm being told is to get it, we'll probably be going in with emergency management and, you know, as they're ordering large amounts, then we're we're getting some from them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chief, with, sorry, you mentioned you're replacing some of the vests for the human officers.
Yeah.
Tell us about the K nine officers as well.
We we have some of those. Those have been private funded. There's a very small window where you can use those in an effective manner. They're heavy. In the summertime, they're extremely hot on animal. And and so they're they're expensive, and we've had some funding to to get those, and we've been very fortunate with it. But it it's one of those things that the the ability to use it is is just in small areas.
So it's typical that you would probably use the vest when you know you're going to be entering in a house and you have prior knowledge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, some type of maybe a search warrant or some type of elevated situation where there's there's a high threat of gunfire.
Well, and I know our our Canines do a lot to protect our officers.
They do.
And reduce the risk in situations. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Chief Phelps? Good report. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Appreciate all you do every day to keep us safe. Look forward to, good things continue to go forward on that. And a minute, I need to back up just a minute. I forgot that Councilmember Kent Greer is not with us tonight. I don't know that he is on Zoom. If he is, I wanted to recognize that he is with us. I failed to do that when we were doing the roll call a bit ago. But Councilmember Greer, I hope you're with us, and thank you for being on Zoom tonight.
I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll move on then to, we don't have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items consisting of the minutes of the city council meeting Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the minutes of the closed session minutes of the council meeting, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. These have been reviewed by the city attorney, the city council, and the city manager. Item C are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, as submitted. Item D is an authorizing resolution. This is with Mattern and Craig. The resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a consulting agreement with Mattern and Craig Incorporated for Temporary Administrative and Management Services Assistance, as submitted. Item E is the final change order, number one, and closeout of construction contract. This is for Hotel Street Extension Project, and this is for approving the final adjusting change order, number one, and moving forward with the closeout of the construction contract for the Hotel Street Extension Project. Please note that this action only refers to closeout of the construction contract. The project budget ordinance will remain active until pending right-of-way acquisitions are completed. And item F is the final offer to purchase real property. This is for the Parkview subdivision. This would be approval of submission of the of the no-upset bids as submitted by the Wild Winds Farms Incorporated to purchase the nine lots owned by the City of Lenore located in Parkview subdivision, which are partial numbers are oh-nine, one-four-eight, two-two, two-twenty-one, two-twenty-three, two-twenty-five, two-twenty-nine, two-sixty-nine, two-ten, two-thirty-four, and two-forty-seven as submitted. So those are the items A through F for the consent agenda. So I'll open it up for any discussion and/or motion on those.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number, item D, for clarification for me.
Okay. Item D, we'll pull out just for a few minutes, and we'll discuss that in a minute. Anything else on A, B, C, E, or F?
With that pull, I'd like to make a motion that we will accept items A, B, C, D, item A, B.
A, B, C, E, and F. Okay, we have a motion for Councilmember Perkins to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, E, and F as presented. If no other discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on the Zoom, Mr. Greer?
Aye.
Thank you. And all opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. We appreciate that. Now, we'll open up the discussion on item D for Mr. Perkins. What would you, what's your question?
I don't understand what it is. Mattern and Craig Incorporated approval of a resolution also on the city manager to enter into a consultative agreement.
Well, a few minutes, we're going to introduce you to that, what that is, but I'll let Mr. Elder Brand.
Well, that's fine if we're gonna do it later. That's fine.
Well, go ahead and if you will.
With the departure of Public Works Director Jared Wright, we're trying to get some additional assistance during the interim period. Radford Thomas, Public Utilities Director, is going to go back and assist, but also we need some additional assistance to get projects moving forward. And so we're contracting with Mattern and Craig and Ed Evans, who's here this evening to go back and fill in that gap for three days a week till we get someone hired.
Okay. He'll be, they'll be working for us as the interim of the Works Director through Mattern and Craig, who he works with.
Okay. I think you told me that.
We brought that up at the last county, county, the whole.
Committed the whole.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to reinsert it.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Person, Perkins. But Councilmember Person, Councilmember Perkins, that we bring item D, the authorizing resolution with Mattern and Craig for this agreement as presented, for your consideration. So if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Greer?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. And that is unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we'll introduce Mr. Ed Evans. Ed is the board manager of the town of One Rock, as well as Beach Mountain, Seven Devils, among a few others. Interim time in Wolfburgsboro, I think, at that and several other things. Ed is now with the Mattern and Craig Firm, and he has agreed through this contract to be, work with us as an interim for our Public Works Directorship while we're in the process of hiring. I knew we need some leadership there. With Radford Thomas, also our Public Utilities Director as well, they'll be working together for that department. So Ed, welcome. Thank you for agreeing to work with us. We've known you for a time and always had great relationships with you, and we appreciate you willing to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight, by the way. All right, we'll move on then. This is a time on our agenda for requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, we don't have anyone here in the audience other than staff and newspaper and other things. But if there's anyone like to address us, even on Zoom. Okay, not hearing any. We'll move on. No reports tonight from our boards and commissions. So we'll move on to the report and recommendations. Our city manager, Mr. Elder Brand.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, a couple of items for information this evening. The Caldwell County Economic Development Commission will meet on Tuesday, March eighth, eight AM, and that will be in-person meeting. I think it's going to be held at the Community College. No, it's going to be held at the Civic Center. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, March seventeenth. It was originally scheduled for the tenth, but that's the Main Street Conference Week, so they'll be meeting on the seventeenth at six PM. The ABC Board will meet on March tenth at two PM, and that's going to be a Zoom meeting. The City County Services Committee will meet on Monday, March fourteenth at noon, and I think that's at the Civic Center. Also, the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, we held in Washington, DC on Sunday and Monday, but March fourteenth through the sixteenth. Councilmember Bill will be leading that delegation along with City Attorney Roar and myself. And with that, that's that's all I have unless you have questions.
Do you, do we need to appoint any voting delegates, or will we do that at our next meeting, or?
Probably since Mr. Beal's the only one going selected, we'll probably let him be the the person to vote.
Also, I don't think there's any votes at this. There's not?
I think, yeah, I think they've gone back and pushed it all to the annual conference.
Okay. If there is, you can handle that.
I'll, I'll.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Elder Brand concerning his report? All right, we'll move on then to a report and recommendation. Our city attorney, Mr. Roar?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. And from the mayor's office, we'll continue to announce we do have a planning board vacancy that exists. As we knew, our new councilmember Kent Greer was a member of our planning board, and has now moved up to, or moved to their city council. I won't say up. I'll just say he's moved to our city council, and we're glad to have him with us. So there is a seat open there on our planning board. So we'll be advertising for that, and we have already. So we'll be waiting to see if we have some interest there and looking at some applications and that kind of thing there on that. I think that was all that I had coming out of that. I think all our other boards are right now in pretty good shape. We're working on, you know, getting the dates all changed, and I know that's moving along very well, so that we are, we're appointing on a once-a-year-type basis for our boards, trying to make it more consistent. We appreciate the work that's going on there. All right, any report from any of our council members?
Well, West Caldwell, they're not in the city, but they're part of our county. Is in the third round of the playoffs tonight up in the Chery County, so we're wishing them well. So if they win tonight, they'll have one more game, and then they'll be going on to the state. So that hasn't been done.
So they're in the.
Boys, West Caldwell Boys. So that hasn't been done since nineteen eighty-six, when we won two years in a row. So we're hoping, we're pushing them to represent the Caldwell County.
You like to, you like to remember that one.
I do. We need somebody to 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 win so we can have that to talk about.
There you go. Yeah, you need to pass the buck to the next, the next group.
How to pass it on.
Well, we wish West Caldwell very good luck. How did High Brighton do with their next?
We finished first round. We got, the girls went to second round.
Okay.
And the boys, we lost first round. The boys lost first round.
Well, that's that's good. I know they had some great seasons, and we appreciate it. And I know your son was part of the the team, and congratulations to him for, I know, a successful season.
Kenny Storey's daughter on the women's.
That's right. Kenny and Mr. Storey's daughter was on the women's team, and she could, she could play. I tell you that.
She had a contract with the news topic.
She must have. They like to watch her shoot, that's for sure.
They certainly catch her in action.
Well, congratulations to all of our our local teams as they move forward. And we wish the best for West Caldwell as they move. Hopefully, they'll get by another round and see where where they go from there. That would be fantastic. So, anything else to come before us? A lot of things are moving forward, so we'll continue to keep you posted on that as we as we work forward. But if there's nothing else to come before us tonight, we stand adjourned. But if there's nothing else to come before us tonight, we stand adjourned.